Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Dan Grottnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. Today's date is Monday, November 13th, 2023. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioner Bozarg, Sirulo, Crowell, Kermani, Marine, Osorio, and Rampershead. And before we get to our agenda, I'd like to just highlight some great news from earlier this month. The City Council unanimously voted to approve the Department of City Planning's South Richmond zoning relief plan. This important initiative will ease zoning burdens on homeowners, enhance preservation of natural features, and give the community greater say on sensitive areas and sites in the special South Richmond Development District in Staten Island. The previous 50-year-old rules often forced homeowners to navigate through expensive, time-consuming regulations to install a pool or remove a tree on their property, for example, but larger sites with sensitive natural features, those that actually warrant such thorough regulations, didn't always get the same scrutiny. With the Council's approval, we have corrected that imbalance. Congratulations to all involved in this effort. Thanks to the City Council for their approval. I want to especially thank our Staten Island leadership team of Katie Farrar Iannito and George Todorovic, and of course, to all of you as members of the City Planning Commission for your support and approval of this proposal. Congrats. I'd also like to thank the New Yorkers who attended our kickoff open house for the Long Island City Neighborhood Plan last Monday, and our Cross Bronx Bike Tour and Community Gathering over the weekend. The former was a major first step in our collaborative work with Councilmember Julie Wan, facilitator WXY, and New Yorkers who live and work in the area to find a path forward toward new housing, income-restricted housing, new jobs, open space, and improved resiliency in Western Queens. And the latter was a great opportunity to continue to connect with the public on our important work to reimagine the Cross Bronx Expressway in a new and interactive format. Many thanks to our Bronx and CPE teams and our partners at the City and State Departments of Transportation, City's Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, and our community partners. Moving to today's agenda, we're going to start with an application for a site selection and acquisition of 4725 34th Street in Long Island City, Queens, for the City Department of Transportation. This loft building would be used by around 340 DOT staff members, including sidewalk and concrete inspectors, traffic operations automated enforcement, and traffic operations fiber optic electricians. Next up, we'll go from an acquisition to the opposite, a pair of applications by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to dispose of vacant city-owned small buildings at two locations. The first is for 9722 Cresskill Place in Jamaica, Queens, and the second is 7 North Moore Street in Tribeca in Manhattan. In Midtown Manhattan, we'll learn about proposed design changes at One Penn Plaza to improve the layout and circulation for this public open space located right across the street from Penn Station. We also will discuss a residential building proposed for 3742 30th Street in Dutch Kills, Queens, which is back from its presentation before Community Board One. It would include over 60 homes and a supermarket via the Department's Fresh Program, which brings healthy food options to underserved communities in all five boroughs. With that, Sarah, let's go ahead and get started.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, November 13th, 2023. The time is 1:06 PM and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a site selection and acquisition in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Bree Mihah.
All right, welcome, Bree.
Okay, this is an application submitted by the New York City Department of Transportation and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services. As mentioned, it's for a site selection and acquisition at 4725 34th Street. This proposed project stems from DOT's goal to address their need to expand and relocate four of their programs due to mayoral policies and priority projects. I'll explain a bit more in detail. So to start off, the sidewalk inspection and management inspectors and the citywide concrete programs are expanding due to a city court mandate. In 2016, the city reached a settlement with the Eastern Paralyzed Veterans Association to upgrade or install new curb ramps to current ADA standards. This would affect approximately 162,000 street corners. In order to address these safety and equity improvements, DOT is in the process of hiring approximately 440 new staff members citywide, and they intend to assign approximately 111 of those employees at the project site. Now, the Traffic Operations Automated Enforcement Program is also expanding. This is due to a mayoral program, also known as Vision Zero. DOT is in the process of hiring new employees for this program. This is pursuant to a new law that went into effect in 2020, which aims at expanding speed camera surveillance at every elementary, middle school, and high school in the city. This expansion would affect approximately 730 school districts. And DOT is intending to assign approximately 200 new employees at this project site. And lastly, the Traffic Operations Fiber Optic Electricians are relocating due to the construction of the New York City Department of Environmental Protection's Water Tunnel Number Three. And lastly, I just want to mention that this proposed action was listed in the 2020 to 2021 and the 2021 to 2022 Citywide Statements of Needs. The proposed project is located in the neighborhood of Long Island City. As previously mentioned, this is in the Community District Two of Western Queens. There is good access to public transit with a station servicing the Seven Line, approximately one block to the north. There are also several bus lines which provide service between Queens, Manhattan, and Brooklyn. The project site is located approximately one block south from Queens Boulevard, which serves as an arterial and commercial corridor that connects Eastern Queens to Manhattan via the Queens Borough Bridge and extends along several community districts throughout Queens. 35th Street on the eastern side of Block 250 is a north-south street that connects Sunnyside and Long Island City to Astoria. It crosses over Queens Boulevard and Sunnyside Yards to the north via Honeywell Street, which is a two-way street. The project area is highlighted in the red dashed line. This was in an M11 zoning district in 1961. Later, in 1995, it was rezoned as part of the Long Island City Framework Implementation to better reflect the local characteristics and guide new investments. Since then, the zoning districts have remained unchanged, and in 2006, the project area became part of the Long Island City Industrial Business Zone with the intention of providing several financial and policy benefits to industrial businesses. The surrounding project area is composed predominantly in industrial and manufacturing land uses seen here in purple. There are also some public facilities seen here in blue, and commercial office buildings in red, and a few one-to-two family buildings seen in yellow. The prevailing built form in the area is generally comprised of a two-to-four-story warehouse building format, and these were built in the early 1900s. Here we see a bird's-eye view of the project area facing north. The dashed red line depicts the lot that DOT is looking to acquire space at. The proposed project would be situated in an area surrounded by public facilities, including Aviation High School to the north and an FDNY maintenance facility to the south. The proposed project would be situated on the ground and mezzanine floors of an existing four-story building of a privately owned block. Some of the current tenants include a light manufacturing business on the third floor and a tech company on the fourth floor, and these businesses do intend to remain on these floors. There are vehicle and pedestrian entrances into the mezzanine floor along the south and southern sides of the building, as well as an entrance to the north, to the ground floor. Here we can begin to see the current conditions of the project site through some recent photos. We're able to observe here the fenced-off surface parking lot, which is included in the proposed project. This photo is facing southeast from the corner of 47th Avenue and 34th Street. This photo shows the project site, as well as the surface parking lot and the ground floor entrances. And on the left-hand side, we can see some of the bike racks that would be able to be used by the employees, but also we can see two-to-three-story warehouse buildings on the left, which were originally built in the 1930s and are typical of this area. This photo is now facing northwest. This photo is facing southwest from 35th Street, and here we can also see some of the entrances for the pedestrians and the vehicles to the mezzanine floor. Okay, now we're facing northwest. This is at the intersection of 35th Street and 48th Avenue. Again, we can see some of the entrance access points, and along with the entrances on the eastern and northern sides, this is shown to alleviate traffic during some of the peak hours. And lastly, this photo is facing the project site, facing east from 34th Street, and we can see a portion here of the surface parking lot that would be designated to employee parking. All in all, the proposed project, the proposed development would consist of the acquisition of approximately 175,000 square feet spread across the ground and mezzanine floors and would include surface parking lot as well. DOT proposes this site selection and acquisition to consolidate their need to expand three of their divisions and relocate one of them. This would create approximately 310 new jobs in the area. The hours of operation would range between 5:30 AM to 6:00 PM. This would be split between two different shifts, and the peak vehicle traffic would occur between 5:30 and 6:30 in the morning. On a typical weekday, approximately 220 vehicles would enter and exit the facility. Internal space would be used for workstations, storage, and parking for DOT fleet vehicles and equipment storage, while the external space would be used for DOT fleet vehicles, equipment storage, and approximately 30 employee parking spaces. And additionally, some other employees who may need parking spaces would take up part of the footprint where DOT vehicles would leave to function on-site. And no new development would be required, only minimal interior modifications would be made. This project includes a racial equity report. In this graph, we can see that it summarizes the racial and ethnicity composition in Community District Two. Now, this compares numbers throughout the borough of Queens and New York City overall. Here we can see that the community district is predominantly Asian, and in 2020, from approximately 137,000 residents, about 39% identified as Asian, and this is a higher share of the total population than borough-wide and citywide. 28% of the total population identified as Hispanic Latino, and 26% identified as white. This graph shows any changes in racial and ethnicity composition from 2010 to 2020. We can see that there was growth in all races and ethnicities in Community District Two. And while being a smaller percentage of the total population in CD Two, the Black/Non-Hispanic population has experienced a growth of 87% in comparison to a 4% decline borough-wide and 5% decline citywide. And in summary, DOT seeks to select and acquire approximately 175,000 square feet to address the needs of expanding and relocating their sidewalk inspection and management and traffic operation programs. And according to the applicant, the surrounding areas, access to public transit, the current land uses, and the city's economic planning objectives in regional hubs such as Long Island City make this site an appropriate location for DOT. Thank you, and I conclude my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Bree. And I think it was all pretty clear. I just wanted to ask one follow-up about that settlement in 2016 that you mentioned. So this was a city settlement which required that the city install curb ramps, and I believe you said that it would affect, I just want to make sure I had the number correct, 162,000 owners? Okay, hold that answer for a second.
From my knowledge, or my research, it says 162,000 street corners would be impacted by this work, yes. And the settlement was reached due to the Eastern Paralyzed Veterans Association calling for this.
These jobs that are being-
Let me suggest this. Let's pose the questions, and we're going to let you answer all of them together, okay? For use of reference, if that's okay. Yeah, okay, let's gather all the questions, and we'll have you the answers if we have technical issues. That would be more effective. Go ahead, Rob.
With regards to the new hires, are these full-time positions, or after this program's completed, they're going to downsize? Is that DOT's plan? I'm just curious, because I know they started replacing the curbs from the last few years, so I'm just curious about that.
That's not too bad. Just then, you can conclude myself.
Thank you. What is the proposed length of the lease? And just a quick follow-up. And the various units that would relocate here, they're more than one, is there not? Are they all coming from other privately-owned spaces?
Thank you for the presentation. Will the land use, sorry, light manufacturing businesses that exist that are right there be displaced, or will they be accommodated somewhere else?
It's a question for the agencies, I guess, when they're here, but I'm wondering whether connecting it to the 2016 settlement means that they haven't been able to move forward at all in reaching kind of the progress to meet the settlement agreement, and if they're waiting for this to happen in order to complete that? And just getting a sense of the timeline, if and when it's through the land use process, when are they able to be operational?
First, I will answer the question about whether their jobs will be full-time, or in the future, will they be downsized? To my knowledge, these jobs will be permanent, full-time, new jobs, because three of those programs have to expand. But I can get more confirmation to see, like, what is the length of their goal for the employees? And the proposed length of the lease, I believe, is 20 years, so they're looking to lease the space. And yeah, usually I've seen, at least with the prior application with DEP, it was 20 years, and DOT also stated 20 years. I will confirm whether the units are coming from privately-owned spaces. I'm not too sure about that, but I can follow up and get that answer for you. And the question about whether the current industrial businesses in the area may be displaced. The applicant has stated that no businesses will be displaced. The spaces right now actually are used by DOT. They have a temporary license agreement, and actually, in one of the spaces, I think it was the ground floor, it hasn't been used by another business in quite some time, so DOT has been there. So no businesses would be displaced. And I can get more information about the last question, about how far along they are in that settlement and the program for addressing those needs. Okay, thank you so much for your patience.
This application is certified, Agenda Item One. The second item on our agenda is a certification of a disposition of city-owned property in Queens Community District Twelve. Our presenter is Nicole Pavez.
Great, thank you. Today I'll be presenting on 9722 Cresskill Place disposition. This is a public application in the Jamaica neighborhood of Queens in Community District Twelve. The applicant proposes to dispose the property. The property has been under jurisdiction with the Department of Sanitation and is occupied by a vacant two-story building, which was formerly used as a Queens section house. DSNY maintains section houses, or section stations, I should say, section stations around the city that are associated with district sanitation garages and are available for workers assigned to those garages to use on their scheduled breaks and as mustering locations for staff who will be responding to snow or other sanitation emergencies before being deployed to their apps. Section stations are provided when a sanitation district are very large and workers will not have sufficient time to travel back to their home garage for breaks, or when the district garages do not have adequate space for break rooms or mustering facilities. There was a flood in the building due to a burst pipe, therefore DSNY completely vacated the building. The proposed project area is in Jamaica, which is in Southern Queens. It has frontage on Cresskill Place, which is an hour-50-foot road that connects between 97th Avenue to the north and 101st Avenue to the south. The proposed project area is three blocks east of the Van Wijk Expressway. The area has good access to public transit with the Sutcliffe Boulevard Archer Avenue subway station serving the EJZ line located five blocks north, and the Jamaica Long Island Railroad Station located four blocks north. There are also several bus lines throughout the neighborhood. The project area is mapped within our five districts. The surrounding area consists of residential and community facility uses. The area one block south of the project is C14, and mostly consists of three-to-four-story residences with a few ground-floor commercial uses. The project area consists of Block 10011, Lot 14. This slide shows a bird's-eye view of the project area displayed with a dashed line from 101st Avenue. Here we have a view facing southwest of the project area from 97th Avenue, and this is a view of the north entrance at 9722 Cresskill Place. The applicant proposes a disposition of the property. This concludes my presentation, and I'll take questions at this time.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm curious how frequently the department were asked to provide broad disposition without any sense of what the plans are for disposition. I know the request is for flexibility, but to understand what the public good might be of disposing this, whether it's ultimately going to be for sale. It's obviously in a residential area. Have there been conversations with HPD about bundling it with other small home projects? So it would be great to know a little bit more about potential options for how it will be disposed, once it has the authority to be disposed.
I'll answer that for a second. Other questions? No questions? That's the one I asked you.
Yes, of course. So the DCAST has asked several agencies, including HPD, if they wanted the property to transfer the jurisdiction, but it seems like, at least in HPD's case, it wasn't as feasible, and it would be more feasible to dispose of the property than to kind of redo Yeah, so the properties were offered to other agencies to see if they were interested, and HPD found it not financially feasible. And so with the opportunity to dispose of the site, it would go up for auction within the neighborhood.
Follow-up for the previous item, really quick? Hold that for a second. You have some of this. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're certified. Okay, let's, is your certificate? Yeah, we're certified.
Yes, item number two is certified.
Great. Certified. The third item on our agenda is a certification of a disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan Community District One. Our presenter is Trevor Lovett.
Today I'll present a ULP application for the disposition of city-owned property by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. Like the presentation you just saw from my colleague Nicole, DCAST is acting on behalf of the Department of Sanitation to dispose a disused section station. The property is located at 7 North Moore Street in Tribeca, Manhattan Community District One. Approval of the action will give DCAST the flexibility and authority to dispose of the property in the future. The proposed disposition site is located between West Broadway and Barrack Street, immediately to the southeast of the Holland Tunnel Rotary. The site is within the coastal zone and the 1% annual flood plain, and the Tribeca West Historic District begins immediately opposite the site on the south block of North Moore. Also across the street is the Eftin Y Hook and Ladder Eight Firehouse of Ghostbusters fame, which plays a role in the history of this property. Land uses in the vicinity of 7 North Moore consist primarily of mixed-use pre-war loft buildings, in which formerly industrial spaces have been converted to residential use with ground-floor retail. The bulk of these structures vary widely, but most commonly rise between six to eight stories. The disposition site and the entirety of the surrounding area is owned C62A and is within the special Tribeca Mixed Use District, or TMU, which was first established in 1976 and subsequently revised in 1995 and 2010. Provisions of the TMU reflect the changing landscape of Tribeca. At the time of its initial establishment, the neighborhood was in the process of reorienting from a center of light manufacturing towards residential, often in the form of unlicensed conversion of the loft spaces. The TMU therefore outlines specific criteria for the conversion of loft dwellings, as well as bespoke use provisions intended to maintain a blend of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. 7 North Moore specifically is within Area A6 of the TMU. This modifies the underlying FAR to 5.4 from 6.0. Inclusionary housing is designated in R8 districts, which is the residential equivalent of C62A within Area A6. The FAR for such developments that meet the provisions of inclusionary housing is increased to 7.2. However, it is important to note that this zoning lot is beneath the minimum lot size requirements for R8A. Therefore, this FAR would not be achievable in a strictly residential development. You can see in this aerial the built context of Tribeca surrounding 7 North Moore. The prevailing building typology, as stated before, is pre-war lofts. The area is delineated by the change in the direction of the street grid, as well as the Holland Tunnel Rotary, and the Art Deco massings of the landmark designated AT&amp;T Building to the north and the Western Union Building, which you can see at the south of this aerial. Also notable is the distinct of former 58 Leonard colloquially known as the Jenga Building, which also defines the streetscape nearby. The disposition site features ready access to the AC and E and 123 lines, both within two blocks, as well as proximity to open space at Tribeca Park and Fin Square. You can see here the existing street conditions. At left is the north block of North Moore, with the disposition site is this three-story sort of squat building. Interesting to note is there are four parcels on this block front of North Moore, two of which have been developed in the last two decades as co-op and condo buildings. And the view at the right is of the south block of North Moore. Hook and Ladder Eight can be seen at far right. Hook and Ladder Eight was initially housed at 7 North Moore, beginning in 1863 until 1909, at which time it relocated to its present-day location across the street. Ownership of 7 North Moore was transferred to DSNY, and the original structure was- Ownership of 7 North Moore was transferred to DSNY and the original structure was demolished in 1939 and the existing improvement was purpose-built as a section station the same year. My colleague already touched on the functions of section stations at Crestkill Place. The operational uses of 7 North Moore were the same. The facility also housed, however, the headquarters of the Permit Inspection Unit, or PIU, where inspectors would muster before going into the field to issue permits for certain types of garbage removal. PIU operations were relocated at Brooklyn 2 Garage in 2007 and section station operations ceased in 2015 with the completion of the Spring Street Garage, located roughly half a mile away from 7 North Moore. At this time, the facility of 7 North Moore was permanently vacated. 7 North Moore occupies a regularly shaped zoning lot measuring 1,403 square feet. It achieves a height of 35 feet over three stories. This existing improvement has it built FAR 2.41. And you can see a representation of the building envelope at left here. The facility also features rooftop mechanicals and cellar space. The lot coverage is near total. The floor area of the facility is 3,393 square feet. As previously stated, 7 North Moore is within a C6-2A zoning district within the special Tribeca Mixed Use District Area A6 and is located within the 1% annual flood plain. In summary, DCAST on behalf of DSNY is seeking ULEP disposition approval for the surplus property at 7 North Moore. Approval of the action will give DCAST the flexibility and authority to dispose of the property in the future. Thank you.
I guess similarly, and I think this would apply to the last project, well, what happens, let's say it goes to auction, what happens to those funds? Do they just go back to general reserves for the city? Just curious kind of what, what the end, if the goal is to have the flexibility to dispose of if other agencies don't want it, which I presume is the case, and then it goes to auction, where do funds from the auction go?
Thank you. So, similar situation to Crestkill Place. This property was evaluated by multiple agencies pursuant to DCAST's procedure. I think they have a pretty standardized workflow for evaluating agency interest for possible transfers. The disposition procedure itself is outlined in the city charter. There has to be a fair market valuation and do advertisement in the city record before it goes to auction. I can't speak specifically as to where those funds might go. That's definitely a good question to bring up with DCAST, however.
Item three is certified. The fourth item on our agenda is a non-ULEP referral of a modification of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Ezra Moser.
Yep, Commissioner Cerulo is recused on this one, just noting for the record. There we go. Cool, great. Okay, so, this is a private application by One Penn LLC, which is a subsidiary of Vornado Realty Trust, for a non-ULEP modification to a previously approved special permit. The modification would allow design changes to a public plaza located at One Penn Plaza in Midtown Manhattan. The original special permit was approved in 2019 and allowed for the reduction of bonus plaza and arcade areas and resulted in upgrades to the particular plaza area that we're going to be talking about and is subject to this modification application. I'd note that for non-ULEP modifications, the commission must find that there are no new zoning actions nor any new waivers that are required to facilitate the proposal and that no new modifications are required outside of the proposed mods being sought today. Lastly, the commission must also find that the findings of the previously granted special permit remain valid and we will return to all that later in the presentation. Okay, so, One Penn Plaza is located on a full-block site on a block bounded by West 34th Street, West 33rd Street, 7th and 8th Avenues in Manhattan Community Board 5. It's located directly north of the Penn Station complex and, as mentioned, the requested action is a non-ULEP modification to a previously approved special permit which will facilitate design changes to one of the public plazas on the site. I would note that additionally, the applicant is applying for a CPC Chair certification per cafes and kiosks within plazas located on the site as well. So, seen here in its surrounding context, outlined in yellow, is the One Penn Plaza building, or maybe complex is more appropriate. It's proximal to Two Penn Plaza directly to its south, which is another Vornado-owned property that contains entrances to both Penn Station as well as MSG. Obviously, we can see the MSG complex directly to its south and then Moynihan Station to its southwest. And we'll see more clearly in following slides, but there are actually three buildings on the site and just make note that the large office building is kind of centrally located here. So, as you can see in this land use and area map, beyond the transit uses that are associated with both the Penn Station, MSG, and Moynihan Station complexes, the surrounding area is primarily high-density commercial with large office uses with ground-floor retail and the site itself is split between a C6-4 and a C6-6 district, both of which are in the special Midtown District. Okay, and One Penn Plaza, as I noted, contains three buildings. There are two retail pavilions that are located on 7th Avenue and 8th Avenue. Can just point to the side of them here. And then there's a centrally located main office tower, which is the primary building that was highlighted in yellow two slides prior. So, the West Plaza, which you can see highlighted in the red dotted line, that is the subject of this non-ULEP modification request before you today. Okay, so, the image on the right depicts this West Plaza under its current, or in other words, approved conditions. So, it was approved pursuant to this 2019 special permit, which was made under Section 74761, which is for the elimination or reduction in the size of a plaza area for which a bonus has already been granted and utilized. I'll note that this was the first and only time this special permit has been used. As we'll discuss in subsequent slides, the granting of the special permit required the applicant to make significant upgrades to the plaza space and to provide a compensating amenity that's of equal or greater value to the public than the amount of plaza that's being reduced. In this case, it was a new entrance to Penn Station, which is primarily located, I'm going to use the pointer a little bit off-screen, but is located in a plaza that's just to the east of this West Plaza, but there is access to this main entrance via this area just below where it says Talking 120 Broadway that says Lobby. You can actually access the Penn Station entrance from there, from the West Plaza as well. So, the, let's see, the West Plaza generally has an elevated through-lot portion which runs north to south and it's between three and five feet, depending on which, you know, street you're on, elevated above curb level. And there is additionally a alcove-like, what we call an interior portion or a minor portion of the plaza, which is where you see Cafe A and Cafe B, the language there, but just generally that alcove portion that abuts this retail pavilion on 8th Avenue, that's what we're calling the interior portion. And that's where the proposed modifications are going to be made. So, again, this is the currently approved condition from 2019 and we will return to this diagram and certainly show the contrast between the approved and the proposed. Okay, so, there are seven distinct plaza areas on the One Penn Plaza site. It's a lot. Three of these had their area either partially or largely removed by this Section 74761 special permit back in 2019 and those are the areas that are highlighted in this map in red. And some of the spaces, like the area that's called the North Plaza, which is kind of towards the top-middle part of your screen, that was reduced by roughly half of its area to allow for the lobby to be enlarged and brought to the street level and activated. And then you can see with the West Plaza, which is, you know, towards the left-hand side of the screen and then the southwest Plaza towards the kind of central lower portion, these had pretty de minimis amounts of their area reduced. And again, these actions are all approved in 2019, were part of like a major repositioning of this, you know, 2 million square foot office building, so. Anyhow, I think it's just worth highlighting briefly that, as I was just alluding to, as it pertains to the West Plaza, the 2019 special permit approval allowed for the reduction of just 157 square feet of plaza area, which is highlighted here in red. And it was actually sought because the footprint of the retail building, which you can see where it says retail, food and food, they actually constructed that pavilion with portions of it extending over area that was approved as bonus plaza. So, this is basically correcting and permitting the as-built condition. Okay, so, this diagram here shows the proposed conditions pursuant to the applicant's requested non-ULEP modification. The main change is that the interior portion, which again is kind of seen here in the left, you can see that says Cafe A and B in it, just to kind of center yourselves. This portion here will be dropped three feet so that it is flush to grade, or sorry, flush to the rest of the plaza level. And it would have improved programming and a new open-air cafe layout. And I will return to the differences between the approved and proposed conditions just for additional clarity. But first, second. So, first, I just want to note that, again, the commission granted the 2019 special permit because the proposal, which sought to reduce portions of a bonus public space on the One Penn Plaza site, it was approved because it met the following findings. One, that the reduction was adequately compensated by the substitution of another public amenity or improvement on the zoning lot and that that amenity was equal or increased in terms of public benefit. And two, that the remaining publicly accessible open areas were upgraded to the maximum extent feasible with the plaza standards. As we discussed earlier, the new Penn Station entrance was provided as a compensating amenity and the current plaza design is considered to be compliant to the maximum extent feasible with plaza standards. At least it was deemed that way in 2019. Because small portions of the West Plaza were reduced pursuant to the special permit, as we just saw two slides earlier, it just means that future design changes and changes to the POPs have to be made as a modification to the special permit, whereas more typically, design changes to POPs are made by CPC Chairperson certification. Okay, now, we're going to move to a side-by-side of the approved condition and the proposed condition. It's kind of hard in plan view to see the lowering of the interior portion three feet, but we will have ample sections and renderings to help illustrate this. But you can see the main difference between the left and the right side is that there is a reconfigured interior portion layout and I think it's worth noting that the amount of amenities is the same between the two conditions, it just is reconfigured. Let's see, so, hopefully you're able to see this okay. It is a little hard to see. I'll note that the below highlighted red elevation is if you were, it's a north-to-south section looking west at this interior plaza portion that we've been discussing. And here you can see that there's a set of stairs up to it that's flanked by about a three-foot kind of podium. And so, now, in the proposed conditions, this is all just going to be one-level plaza area. And again, there are going to be renderings to help illustrate this, I think, a little more clearly. Okay, so, because of the difficulty in seeing that, here's a rendering of the approved conditions that very clearly like highlights this three-foot grade change between the through-lot portion of the plaza and the interior portion. Again, approved conditions and then the same view in proposed conditions. So, here you can see that the legibility of space is much clearer. There's, I think, room for more creative programming because you have more space to work with and generally speaking, from an urban design standpoint, it's preferable to have a plaza all at the same level. Changes of grade for plazas are typically considered, you know, something that we're trying to move away from. So, I'm going to show a series of renderings from different perspectives. Here's the approved conditions and it's looking south by southeast. You can see kind of to, just to the edge of the site, the drum of MSG and over on the kind of center right-hand side of the screen, it is a little bit difficult to see here, but there are the steps that are leading up to the elevated portion in the approved condition. So, here is the same view in the proposed condition. So, you can see that the plaza is flush to the rest of the plaza level. The interior portion is flush to the through-lot portion. And I'm going to show some other renderings of the proposed modification from different angles just to help more clearly highlight that. So, here's a proposed modification looking south by southwest. You can much more clearly see the Madison Square Garden drum over here and you can see over here the steps to the Farley Post Office Building slash Moynihan Station. And here situated nicely in the foreground is one-level contiguous plaza space. So, one second. Hard to flip pages while holding the phone and the other hand. In summary, the applicant is requesting a non-ULEP modification to a previously granted special permit to facilitate design changes to a public plaza. And for approval, the commission must determine that the findings of the original special permit are still met, that no new waivers are being sought, and that the previous waivers aren't being expanded in scope. I would note that there's no new additional waivers being sought as the plaza area and its boundaries remain the same and there are no changes to the compensating amenity, which is again that Penn Station entrance. Additionally, the number and square footage of plaza amenities remains the same and the design itself is largely the same as well, with the exception, obviously, of the reconfigured interior portion of the West Plaza. And the application would be referred to Community Board 5 in Manhattan before returning to the commission for approval. So, any questions on that?
Thank you, Ezra. So, just for clarification, I think it is all pretty clear here. The big change is the interior portion being lowered to be flush with the through-lot portion. No new waivers, no changes to the amenity that was created to enable the special permit in the first instance. Square footage of the amenities is all the same. The reason why we are talking about a three-foot lowering of a POPs here is because these particular changes were enabled in the first instance by a special permit, this special permit 74761. Therefore, any subsequent changes, even if they're modest, must come through this process to amend. Does that, do I have that correct? Okay, so that's my question. Hold your answer for a second. I'll see if there are other questions for you and then you can deal with all of them.
I just have one question. We've had a lot of discussion about this area in recent months concerning Madison Square Garden and also a greater effort to see more of a public, a grander statement on the public realm there. How does this proposed plan connect with that effort, if at all?
Okay, so, as to your question. So as to your question, the materials and materiality of these public spaces, again in 2019, it wasn't just the space that we're showing, it was all seven of the spaces there. The materiality is very much aligned with the Plaza 33 buildout that Vornado has been, you know, taking the lead on, and it's the same landscape architect. So I would say that, you know, there's, these are obviously like private spaces, or sorry, public spaces on private property. So to a degree, they're separate from some of the conversations, but there is a concerted effort, you know, to where Vornado has, you know, the ability to exercise, you know, design discretion over spaces that to try to make it as seamless a public realm in that immediate area as possible. Oh, yes. And as to your earlier question on the permit, yes. It's simply because this was reduced by the special permit that all subsequent design changes have to be made pursuant to it. It's kind of more procedural than anything. Yeah.
This item is going to be referred to the community board for 45 days. The fifth item on our agenda is a non-alert post-referral of a zoning authorization in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Colin Ryan.
Hello, commissioners. Okay. Oh, great, okay. Is it going to be projected up there as well? This is a private application by FH2Brow Builder Corporation for a chair certification of a fresh food store at 3742 30th Street in Long Island City, CD1 Queens. The applicant is also seeking an authorization per height to accommodate the additional residential floor area associated with a fresh certification. These actions would facilitate the development of a new eight-story plus seller mixed-use building with a grocery store on the ground floor and 63 dwelling units. Product area is located in the Dutch Kills neighborhood of Community District One in Queens. In terms of the surrounding context, the product area is located along 38th Avenue and one block west of 31st Street, both major commercial and industrial corridors in the area. Northern Boulevard is located three blocks south of the product area, which is a major east-west transportation corridor running through Queens out to Long Island and has a mix of residential, commercial, industrial, and community facility uses in the area. The area also has numerous transit resources. The 39th Ave Dutch Kills subway station is three blocks southeast from the site along 31st Street and is serviced by the N and W subway line. A half mile to the south is Queens Plaza, a major transportation hub served by the E, M, and R subway line. The Queens Borough Plaza Station is served by the 7N and W lines, is also a half mile southwest of the product area. Lastly, the 21st Street Queensbridge subway station servicing the F subway line is located a half mile southwest of the product area. The product area is depicted by the red line on the map and is located within the Dutch Kills sub-district of a special Long Island City mixed-use district. This sub-district is made up of several mixed-use districts, including M13R7X, M12R6A, M12R5D, and M12R5B. All these districts contain some degree of mid-density residential and mixed-use buildings, as well as one-story warehouses and industrial uses. The product site is currently zoned M12R6A. The product area was originally zoned M13 in 1961, and was subsequently rezoned in 1990 to M13D, and again in 2008 to its existing M12R6A district to encourage a mix of uses. The development site outlined here in red is located at the intersection of 38th Avenue and 30th Street. Its western boundary runs along Old Ridge Road, an unmasked street with an easement on it. It is formerly used as a parking and storage space for neighboring buildings. The site contains one tax lot, Lot 38, part of Block 371, and is currently unimproved. We are now facing northwest along the development site at the intersection from 38th Avenue and 30th Street. Here is another view along 30th Street facing southwest. And here we have one last view facing northwest from 38th Avenue. The applicant is proposing to build a maximum eight-story plus seller, 85-foot-tall residential building with a fresh food store located on the first and second floor. The building would contain nearly 56,000 square feet of zoning floor area at an FAR of 5.36. The proposed residential floor area would be approximately 44,000 square feet with 63 dwelling units at an FAR of 4.81, a 1.81 increase in FAR if the fresh plans were to be certified. Proposed fresh food store would be located on the first and second floors at approximately 12,500 square feet of floor area at an FAR of 0.47. The proposed development would contain a total of 45 parking spaces with the minimum required of the underlying zoning. These are the fresh food store plans. Fresh food stores have many requirements, most importantly requiring a minimum of 6,000 square feet for the grocery store and a minimum of 25% of the space to be allocated for the sale of perishable goods. The plans for this project comply with these requirements. The grocery store would be accessible via entrances on 38th Avenue and would occupy the first two and parts of the first two floors. This image depicts the height waiver sought by the applicant. The area outlined in red displays the reallocated residential floor area added to the top of the proposed development. The lines in blue outline a 15-foot waiver request stopped by the applicant. This slide shows the store entrance and the required signage for the fresh food store. The applicant is seeking a CPC authorization to facilitate a building up to a height of 90 feet and eight stories, a 15-foot height increase, and an additional story about their standard maximum building height control. For quality housing buildings containing a fresh food store, the CPC may authorize the modification to applicable maximum building height controls to allow an increase up to 15 feet and up to one additional story. The proposed fresh food store would occupy the first and second floors of the proposed development, and the ground floor would have a clearance height of 17 feet and four inches, which meets the minimum requirement of 14 feet between finished wall and finished ceiling. The proposed height increases for the development would be 10 feet and up to one additional story, as permitted under zoning resolution section 6322. On October 17th, 2023, Community Board One in Queens voted to approve the application by a vote of 25 in favor and zero opposed. The board noted that this is a 421A eligible project and recommended that income eligibility tiers of the income-restricted unit should not exceed 80% of area median income. To summarize, the applicant FH2Brow Builder Corporation is seeking a chair certification of a fresh food store and a CPC authorization per height to facilitate the development of an eight-story plus seller mixed-use building with 63 total dwelling units and 12,554 square feet for a fresh food store. This concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Yes, this item will be scheduled for a vote at a future public meeting. The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a special permit and zoning tax amendment in Queens Community District 12. Our presenter is Andrew Segwin.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is a private application by Amar 1661191 LLC for a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section 115-60 and a corresponding tax amendment mapping mandatory inclusionary housing, or MIH. These actions would facilitate the development of a new 13-story mixed-use building with 28 dwelling units, of which approximately eight would be permanently income-restricted. In addition to the residential uses, the development is proposed to contain 1,537 square-foot community facility, which would occupy parts of the ground floor and cellar. This project area is located at 166-1191st Avenue in downtown Jamaica, Queens Community District 12. As a reminder, this application was certified on June 26, 2023. Facilitate the development, the applicant is seeking a CPC special permit pursuant to section 115-60 of the zoning resolution, allowing the CPC to permit modification of bulk or floor area regulations for lots within the special downtown Jamaica district. The proposed development's location on a narrow street would limit its as-of-right maximum building height to 40 feet. The applicant is seeking a special permit to waive this restriction to allow development consistent with the street wall and maximum height regulations of buildings not located on narrow streets. The special permit would allow for a maximum building height of 145 feet. In addition to the special permit, the applicant is proposing a zoning tax amendment to map MIH on the site pursuant to option one and/or option two. Community Board 12 approved the application by a vote of 15 in favor and 11 opposed. Concerns raised by members of the board included potential impacts of the projects on the area's sewer and stormwater infrastructure, the height of the proposed development in relation to existing buildings in the surrounding area, and potential risks with storing e-bikes in the proposed development's bicycle parking area. The board submitted their recommendation on October 31st after the submission deadline had passed. The borough president approved the application with conditions which include ensuring that the applicant works with minority and women-owned business enterprises and hires local residents for building construction and management, utilizing MIH option one. The applicant had noted a preference to utilize option two, and ensuring that the applicant paints the rooftop white and considers solar panels and other green features. This applicant will be available to answer questions at Wednesday's public meeting, but I'm happy to answer any inquiries that the commission may have at this time.
That item will be on the Wednesday hearing, November 15th. The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of zoning map and zoning tax amendments and special permit in Brooklyn Community District Eight. Our presenter is Jordan Proff.
Good afternoon, Chair Gorodnik and commissioners. Next slide, please. Why do? Right, thank you. This is a private application by 962 Pacific LLC to facilitate a nine-story mixed-use development containing 150 units, 38 to 45, which will be income-restricted, plus ground floor commercial, community facility, and manufacturing space. The project area is located at 962 Pacific Street in the Crown Heights neighborhood of Community District Eight, Brooklyn. The application was certified on July 24, 2023. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from M11 to M14R7A district, a zoning tax amendment mapping MIH, and a city planning commission special permit to waive all required off-street parking accessory to the residential uses. Community Board Eight discussed this application on September 14th and voted to disapprove the project unless certain conditions were met. Those conditions include an increase in the percentage of affordable units at deep affordability levels, a restrictive declaration limiting the ground floor area to targeted non-residential uses with a local nonprofit empowered to approve new leases, and a $50,000 donation to a local community-based organization that provides anti-displacement services. During the Brooklyn office's most recent discussion with the applicants, they claimed that they are willing and able to meet these conditions, but we will let them explain that in more detail when they present on Wednesday during the public hearing. The borough president's office held a hearing for this application on October 16th and issued its recommendation on November 1st. They recommended approving the application with conditions, including a restrictive declaration limiting ground floor manufacturing to use groups 11 and 17, and a broader agency-wide review of how much mixed-use rezonings are generating floor area actually dedicated to manufacturing uses. The project area is located inside the project area for the Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan, or AIMUP, a proposed neighborhood plan led by the department. Given all the recent outreach and activity related to this proposed plan, we'd like to provide the commission with a brief status update and explain how the proposed application compares with the department's proposal. Under AIMUP, the Department of City Planning has proposed that the project area would be located in an M14R6A zone. This proposed zoning district is designed for mid-block areas south of Atlantic Avenue and would allow for a wide variety of uses and encourage the development of mixed-use buildings with residential on top, and an incentive for one to two floors of commercial, light industrial, and community facility uses. Under AIMUP, mixed-use buildings would receive a preferential FAR to encourage light manufacturing and commercial uses. The Department of City Planning shared draft AIMUP zoning with the public in early September, and a scoping meeting was held on October 17th. In the coming months, we plan to conduct more outreach and engagement, advance a land use application and environmental impact statement, and plan for public realm programmatic and capital investments with an expected certification date in spring 2024. The AIMUP project area has also been the site of eight privately-initiated rezonings in recent years, along with two more just outside the AIMUP boundaries. In general, these private rezonings have been similar in scope to what's being proposed at 962 Pacific, changing the M11 zone to a variety of mixed-use zones permitting higher-density residential development over commercial or light industrial space. This proposed rezoning would fill in the last portion of the northern half of Block 1133 that is still zoned M11, creating a unified block of mixed-use zoning. Once AIMUP, or if AIMUP is adopted, the entire block would then be painted over effectively with the new M14R6A zoning. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that. So we will pick this one up on Wednesday for the hearing, but before we do, I just wanted to pose perhaps one or two additional questions about how 962 Pacific relates to what the department has proposed in AIMUP. You showed us the chart. We see that the official proposal from the department is M14R6A. This is proposed to be an M14R7A. Can you lay out for us what that actually means as a practical matter here, and how we should be, you know, thinking about that in the context of a broader neighborhood plan here? Before you answer, though, I'm going to apply the same rules to me as for everybody else, and just to hold the, remember that question if you don't mind, because I'm going to actually see if there are other questions, and there are. And so if you could just make note of the questions, we'll do them all together. But I'm going to pass this down, we'll just do it. Anybody has a question, throw it in the mix. I'm not going to go in any particular order, just as the phone comes to you. Leah, if you want to go.
Sure. I was actually going to ask, oh, sorry. I do recall we had a similar project in the same area, and one of the statistics that was brought up, and I think it was by a DCP report, but that was also brought up during one of the testimonies from the residents, was the, I think the figure was 10,000 black residents had moved out in the last, I don't remember how long it had been. But what I am wondering is with the same type of MIH, the same statistic, like how does that really reckon with that if we're talking about really heavy displacement, racialized displacement here in this particular area? It is still the regular 30%, right?
Yes, you have more, you have more.
Nope.
Okay.
So just a question, which perhaps it's one you could take a guess at, but you know, the range of the affordable units, is that based on the fact that they haven't exactly finalized how many units of different sizes they're going to have? I'm assuming the seven, the differential of seven involves whether they're bigger units or smaller units? So I'm just trying to figure that out, and it doesn't seem that any of the recommendations spoke specifically of different types of units. So I just wanted to figure out, you know, the range of 38 to 45 income-restricted units is a pretty substantial number. So I'm guessing it could be, you know, if you have studios or you have two or three bedrooms, that could obviously change the number of units available. So I'm just trying to get a sense of that.
My question is, actually, I think less for the applicant, because I think we need
we need buildings like this, I don't, but I'm curious in the AIMUP process, how involved are other housing agencies in thinking about how to couple preservation and anti-displacement strategies with these kind of pro-growth, pro-housing strategies? I don't think it's the applicant, where I was starting, is I don't think it's the applicant's responsibility necessarily to solve that, but given what we see in the racial equity report and the broader housing challenges and displacement challenges surrounding neighborhoods of all experience, are the housing agencies involved in coupling these growth strategies with preservation and anti-displacement strategies, and what, what might those be?
Thanks for the presentation. I, I had a quick question about the, the community board's recommendation about a binding agreement, like, I wanna know what is being discussed, what is the extent of the conversation in terms of how is that, will, how will that be actually legally structured? Are we talking about a community benefits agreement or something else? And then the other question is related to, well, I can, I can ask that directly tomorrow, but, but I'm wondering about the, the recommendation posed by the Borough President about a restrictive declaration to bind the proposed manufacturing floor ratio to a series of specific land-use groups.
All the questions. Great. Thank you. Okay, I will start with how nine sixty-two Pacific relates to the broader AIMUP proposal. Everyone can see the chart, great. Okay. So, when this was first proposed, it was before, when this application, nine sixty-two Pacific, was first proposed, it was before AIMUP was introduced. And so, at the time, M one-four R seven-eight was the zoning district that most closely approximated what it was that they wanted to build. The proposed AIMUP zoning district accounts for the bonuses and incentives that would be provided by City of Yes Housing Opportunity. And so, at the time it was originally proposed, M one-four R seven-A was the zoning district that most closely matched what the applicants were looking for. Now, we're proposing M one-four, the department is proposing M one-four R six-A for this area, and that M one-four R six-A, as I said, has a very generous bonus, a F A R bonus for non-residential, but fundamentally includes City of Yes Housing Opportunity bonuses. And so, the upshot is that the proposed building at nine sixty-two Pacific would be compliant with the proposed AIMUP zoning of M one-four R six-A in almost all ways except one, which is that the nine sixty-two Pacific would be overbuilt on residential square footage by about five thousand square feet compared to what AIMUP would allow. Aside from that, in terms of height, in terms of the number of units, in terms of the overall square footage of the building, it would be compliant. And so, generally, for that reason, we're saying that what's being proposed at nine sixty-two is generally aligned with the department's vision for the area under AIMUP. There just is that one discrepancy of five thousand square feet of residential square floor area. But generally, we consider them to be very aligned. Next question, I will take these two at once. I believe Commissioner Goodrich asked about the exodus of black residents, the displacement of black residents from Crown Heights, and how that relates to M I H. Then there was, I think Commissioner Serrulo also had a question about the range of affordable units. Thirty-eight to forty-five affordable units is what was certified when the application was certified. The applicants wanted to preserve M I H options one and two for maximum flexibility, and so, depending on which option they choose, they could take anywhere from thirty-eight to forty-five, which explains the range. During conversations with Community Board Eight, the developers agreed to provide a higher percentage of affordable units and a large percentage of those units at much deeper affordability levels than M I H would ordinarily require. So, the, you know, this is not what was certified, but the, the current agreement, the, or the current condition from the community board, which the developers, in their recent conversation with us, said that they could meet, was thirty-two percent of all units affordable, and eighteen percent, I believe, of all units at forty percent AMI. So, they're making affordability, they're, they're agreeing to levels of affordability that are pretty substantially beyond what baseline M I H requires.
I just wanna just quickly clarify one feature of the proposed AIMUP plan, where we, we do have a, an incentive structure for, for not, one and two floors of non-residential. So, that's one reason why we're, we're going up to a total of five F A R, but we're also trying to align with the City of Yes Housing Opportunity text, which will allow up to three-point-nine F A R under a new R six-A proposal. And so, to Jordan's point, I just wanna reiterate that we think that both proposals are generally well-aligned, but, but of course, the applicant has decided to, to proceed now, you know, ahead of a neighborhood plan. And would also add that that's one of the reasons why the, there was a deeper level of negotiation around AMI than the uses that we normally see here, because there was, the community board has kind of a higher level of, I mean, so, yeah, thanks.
And Commissioner Bozorg, as far as your question about how the other agencies are involved, I think we have had H P D at many of our AIMUP public meetings over the last few months. I think Jonah could speak a little bit more to the details about what exactly they're proposing and what's involved, but I know that we've been working very closely with them through this whole process to make sure that alongside the increase in the total number of housing units, that we're also ramping up services to make sure that people who want to stay in their homes can stay in their homes. Because I think, as Commissioner Goodrich alluded to, the loss of population, in particular black population in Crown Heights is something that we're very aware of, and is, you know, some, yeah, something that we're aware of as we plan this, and we wanna make sure that anti-displacement services or preservation services are part of the overall package that AIMUP represents. Final question on community board recommendations and how that will be legally enforced. I am going to allow the applicants to answer that question, because those are all things that I think were negotiated after this application certified. So, I will leave that for them on Wednesday. All right, thank you.
Okay, that's to public hearing on Wednesday, November fifteenth. The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District One. Our presenter is Lucia Marquez Reagan.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Karadnik and Commissioners. This is a pre-hearing presentation for a private application by Kent River View LLC to facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use building with forty dwelling units, twelve of which would be income-restricted pursuant to M I H option two. The, the project area is located at two-thirty Kent Avenue in the northside neighborhood of Community District One, Brooklyn. The application was certified August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from an M one-four to an M one-four R seven-X, M X eight district, and a zoning text amendment to section one-two-three-six-three of the zoning resolution to add R seven-X as a residential pairing for a mixed-use district, an M X eight, and to appendix F of the zoning resolution to map M I H. These actions would facilitate the eight-story building containing approximately thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred square feet and an approximately three-thousand-three-hundred square-foot ground-floor commercial. Brooklyn Community Board One held a hearing on October eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and voted thirty-two in favor, one in opposition, and with no abstentions, to disapprove unless the following conditions were met. The community board stated that in their recommendation in the land-use report, which was amended by the full board, was to deny the application unless approval is conditioned on the developer providing thirty-five percent affordable units. On October sixteenth, Brooklyn Borough President's Office held a public hearing, and the department has yet to receive comments. I would just call, take any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I will bring a couple of these things tomorrow, but I just, I had a couple of questions for the department. One is, so, after reviewing the briefing materials, it doesn't seem like there is a plan to actually recruit light industrial tenants in there. Why rezoning to M X? Why, why does the department feel that an M X makes sense? It sounds like an M two-R. I just don't understand the rationale. That, that's one question. And then two follow-up questions, too, when we certified this. I asked for more information about the status of infrastructure investments that were part of the earlier rezoning to which this proposal is, like, a falling up or building on, specifically infrastructure investments, but also the plans for the Con Ed site. Just to understand a little bit, sort of like, what is, what is the plan, big picture in terms of the surrounding area? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferrio. Starting off with your first question, why an M district at all? By the rezoning area, if we did a strictly residential rezoning without any M X districts, there, it would be removing the opportunity for commercial or light industrial businesses to be able to locate here in the future. If you may remember, I don't have the presentation up. The project area includes a lot to the north as well, which is a vacant Con Edison-owned site, and so, by rezoning the entire district to residential district, we would be removing the opportunity for other uses on that site as well. And it also fits within the context of the area. To the east is, and the, the M X eight is mapped there as well. So, this is a continuation of that district as well. I'm also happy to let the applicant speak to that as well. In terms of status improvement for updates, in terms of the proposed River Ring, or the approved River Ring and Peker Plant, we don't have any updates currently on the construction of River Ring to answer that question.
Thank you. Thanks so much for that, I appreciate that, I think, but sort of the, on the first question, I think that you validate why the, I think the, I underline the questions that are coming from the Borough President's Office, and so, my questions as well in terms of, you know, what is the impact of the M X, and is it working? Because we seem to use it in different scenarios, yet there's no guarantee that it will actually generate light industrial, and the expectation that when, that we use, when we use it, is that it will in the zone, in the lots that we are rezoning. So, I understand what you're saying about the, like, not precluding, but then why are we rezoning to begin with? You know what I mean? So, so I, I would love to hear more about, again, and on the larger conversations, what is the impact of the M X, and to what extent is it helping us retain light industrial? Because otherwise, why, why do we keep using it in that context? That's the first question. And the second question on the invest, on the infrastructure improvement, I, I really strongly encourage you to, to get more information for, in preparation for the public meeting, because as you see, the community board is asking as well about that. Their concern about sewer and another infrastructure needs that may exceed sort of like the current capacity, and that's in the, in the, in the materials that you sent, shared. So, anything in addition that you can share, or that could be shared by the applicant next week, I think will be very useful. Because otherwise, we're banking on land-use decisions that were decided based on infrastructure implements that need to be, that need to be built. Otherwise, I think we're just sort of like increasing the potential development capacity.
Thank you for the follow-up questions, Commissioner. I think just to one point in terms of the M X, you know, happy to have a broader discussion on the M X mixed-use districts in general and their ability to create light industrial businesses. But in terms of, you know, this particular site, it was rezoned in twenty-sixteen, I believe, from a, an M, M three-one district to a lighter manufacturing district. And in order to be able to use two vacant lots that currently do not have any, any buildings on them, this would be able to then allow the production of housing and additionally also map M I H and such. But I'm happy to, you know, continue the conversation about the effectiveness of M X districts. Yeah.
This is to public hearing on Wednesday, November fifteenth. Okay, for future votes, for Wednesday, November fifteenth, staff have prepared reports for five forty-one, five forty-five Bay Street and Staten Island Community District One. Here today to present a recommendation and available for questions is Kari Bailey.
Hi, good afternoon. So, the Department of City Planning staff supports the applicant's proposal at five four-one, five four-five Bay Street, which is a zoning map amendment from a C four-dash-two to an R six-C two-dash-three. And it's also an extension of the special Bay Street corridor and a zoning text amendment. And this would facilitate the development of a mixed-use development of the building with ten thousand square feet of ground commercial floor and eighty-one total units, twenty-four, which would be M I H mandatory inclusionary housing, and this is in the Stapleton Neighborhood, Community District One, that amendment. Thank you.
Thanks so much for the presentation, and thanks so much for the follow-up. I, we, I got the memo, and I appreciate that the record was corrected in terms of the, the flood-proofing measures, that, that makes more sense. But I, I took a look at the floodgate proposals, and I had a couple of follow-up questions. One of the questions that I had back then, eh, I think still needs to be addressed, which is, what were the sandy inundation levels experienced? According to some of the, I've seen, eh, they exceeded three feet, and some of the floodgates are below that, especially in the areas that seem to be sort of like most impacted. Some of them are at three feet, but in some cases, the data shows or suggests that they need to be higher. I just wanted to further clarify this, I know that we will be voting on this on Wednesday, but it would be great to get a little more information from the department, and if not, maybe reflect some of this language in the, in the actual report. Thank you.
I'll look into that, thank you.
Also for consideration on Wednesday is a zoning authorization in Staten Island Community District One, a SNAD authorization at ninety Marion Avenue. Any questions? For post-hearing follow-ups, we have twenty-two, twenty-six Third Avenue, which we had a public hearing at the November first public meeting. We have Jose Trucios here today to present a recommendation and available for questions.
Hi, Commissioners, how are you? All right, two to sixth Third Avenue, closing the, the gap right now for the final approval as up for a vote on November twenty-ninth. And just a quick recap where the project is located, it's located in Community Board eleven, includes the development site, two, three additional lots of the project area, and as for a zoning map amendment to resound the residential portion of the development site to commercial, a zoning text amendment to modify the actual special Harlem corridors, and a zoning special permit to waive the parking loading requirements. The department recommends approval of the requested actions. The proposed development, we believe, will contribute to the strength of the life and city science sector in New York City. The building is pretty much built as alright, obviously is almost complete. And we are looking forward to seeing what could bring potentially to East Harlem and extending the life and science corridor along the east side of Manhattan. I don't know. Are there any specific questions that I could answer?
Thanks for the presentation. I'm just curious to, to hear whether you had a chance to discuss with the developer the question about the public benefit of removing the parking requirements. I mean, this is obviously a different case since the building already exists.